So it is eight thirty and I will call to order the council meeting of Tuesday, May the thirteenth. There was an agenda that was pre-circulated. I know there is one addition to the agenda and that was circulated to us earlier. And that's the Troschu Housing Corporation Annual Golf Classic. So I'm not even sure where we want to put that.
Seven, maybe?
So shall we call it seven point four? Seven point four. We're already dealing with Troschu Housing at that point anyway. And are there any other additions? I have one for council and committee reports and that's just a quick update on Troschu Housing. So nine point one. Anything else? Counselor Christie?
If not, I'll move the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. The minutes from the council meeting of April twenty-second were also pre-circulated. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Counselor Cunningham?
I'll move to approve the regular council meeting minutes of April twenty-second, 2025.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to adopt the minutes from April twenty-second, regular council meeting as presented. All those in favor? That's also carried unanimously. Thank you. So in our regular agenda, we'll go to four point one, Policy thirteen dash eighteen. Land agreements. And welcome, Mr. Conken. And anytime you're ready, Mike.
Thank you very much. So Policy thirteen dash eighteen land agreements was presented to Committee of the Whole on April fifteenth for recommendation on revisions. So just to go over some of the revisions that we've made to this policy during this review, revisions to the land payment. Payments will now be based on average market value per acre of comparable lands, not including building values or improvements. Crop damages will be surveyed to ensure that the proper amount of compensation is paid. Revisions for the fence replacement. Additional clarification from that April fifteenth meeting regarding the type of fence that we would be replacing. So there's the four-wire barb is a separate line item where we left it just in case there's page fence or anything else type of fence that we would be replacing, whatever type of fence is currently standing on that project. So from that, the recommended, the recommended motion would be that council approves the changes to Policy thirteen dash eighteen land agreements.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Conken. Are there any questions for, oh, I see two. So Counselor Christie and then Counselor Forbes.
Just curiosity, we talked about establishing the land values before and you were talking about assessments. Could those assessments be done in-house with the numbers from previous sales in the area rather than going to an assessor? Like the companies that we've used for our estate planning and stuff are fairly expensive if you do a land value appraisal. We have numbers in-house, I think, that should be close enough, I think.
I'm gonna pass that one off to Mike Zier.
Who wants to handle that one? It's Mike, Mike or Mike? Mr. Zier, Mr. Hogan?
Through, through the chair, I think that'd be, that'd be difficult to do in-house. It's something we could look at if we needed to, but I don't know that we have the data or the expertise to necessarily do that. One of, I mean, we could look at it and know that for sure. The only other concern that I think could pose is if there was any, if the number we came up with wasn't suitable to the landowner in question, if it's an internal one, then there's, there's possibly the apprehension of bias there versus if it's a third party, then it's fairly solid in terms of, of the number.
Okay, I just, I know that when the land titles are registered, that that value is on the registered land title if it's sold. So whether that's current enough or not, I don't know.
First Counselor Forbes and then I'll come to you, Counselor Whitstock. Counselor Forbes?
Thank you. So just because this policy and the one that, the other one that's coming up on the brushing, one part of it, I see that you're changing from guideline, or you're changing two guidelines from procedures, but in that other policy, you have a procedure that shows how it's done. Is there a reason why this policy doesn't include that?
So which specific part of the, sorry, Counselor Forbes, can you clarify for me?
Sure. So on this policy, you're replacing some wording around it's going from policy procedures to guidelines. So I'm just curious as to what the procedure would be for this policy, whereas the one that's coming after this shows what you're, you're doing for your procedure because I'm looking at this and I'm like wording does matter depending on who's reading it and the liability that might be attached to it. So I'm just curious as to knowing why.
So, Mr. Conken? Are you deferring again?
I might have, through the chair, I might have an answer, but I'll let Mr. Hogan speak first.
Yeah, I think through the chair, it just depends on what the nature of the, like they both have policy guidelines. They, it's just depending on the nature of how specific that needs to be and if that needs to be outlined by council or if it's more of an in-bid function. It doesn't affect anything in terms of beyond what, what's there. So some of them may have, if there's a very specific way that council wants something done, you may see a guideline or if there's some question there. In other ones, there's not necessarily a, there's not necessarily a descriptive governance procedure that needs to occur with some of them.
Yeah, follow-up? Sure, please.
It is a follow-up. I, I just sent it out this morning, but I did receive an email from a gentleman in my division that was requesting you replace a fence out there. So you'll see that email, I've sent it out. So then that becomes the question, what is the procedure when you're, like, are you documenting what the fences look like before, where you put in four wires if there was only three before? Those are the questions that I have received from a phone call that I had last Friday morning on my way into town.
Through the chair, that, yes, that is the procedure. Like when these land agreements are made, we'll assess the fence, see what's there. If it's a three-wire, our standard is we replace it with a four-wire. If they have page wire instead of barbed wire, the page wire will be replaced. In our land agreements, there is the usable fence versus unusable and that states here, I believe, under the fencing compensation. If they don't want the fence replaced, there's all those provisions that can be made during those negotiations with that landowner.
So basically what you're saying in the policy is that depending on the type of fence that's there, we will replace to that similar type and if it's barbed wire, our standard is four wires.
Through the chair, that is correct.
Mr. Zier, you had a comment on that or no? Okay. Counselor Whitstock, you had a question?
Yeah, I just had, referring back to the value of the lands. Currently, we do that when we, MPC goes through municipal reserves. So it's just a local land sales is what we use there. I don't think we have to get too carried away on how to determine it because obviously we already have a way to determine it, so. But then if it gets appealed, it's a little different, but we have, we have a method of getting to the actual value of the lands currently, or at least MPC side does.
Just a comment. Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, there are sheets that we get yearly, so there are some, there is some ability to do that if you go back, if you go back yearly. If you're looking at a, at a purchase per, on the spot, those might change. So, I mean, they wouldn't be outdated by more than a year, but you might see some, some fluctuation.
Okay, yes, Counselor Penner, please.
I just have a question for Counselor Forbes. Do you feel there's something missing here that is not covering what your rate payers concern is? Like we should deal with it here right now rather than, you know, what I mean, be not satisfied with this document after it's gone through.
Right, I think the question that I received is around the, why did he get four? I mean, I know that that's our standard, but he said to me is, is that that was a three-wire fence. I, I don't know what it looked like before, so I can't talk to that and that's what I spoke to him about. But he's like, why would you put up four when it was a three-wire fence? Because that's an extra cost now that he believes he's incurring because of it being now four wires instead of three, which is what the original fence was.
Right, and I hear what you're saying, but to me, and in other municipalities too that we're part of, for safety reasons along those roads, four wire is more reliable than three. I'm not sure exactly the justification, but I just wanted you to clarify what you are saying.
Okay, I'm not hearing any desire to change the policy from what's currently being written here unless I'm getting direction otherwise. Counselor Forbes, please, sure.
Under page twenty-eight, under the crop damage. I'm just wondering if the wording, instead of using the words he and himself, it could
Sometimes, just thinking through, sometimes the crop compensation, crop damage compensation isn't paid to the landowner, it's paid to the party that's farming the land. And so to me, this is saying that if there's crop damage and the landowner considers himself the affected party rather than the individual who's farming, I don't know. How do we clarify that? So generally speaking, when we're paying crop damage, are we paying it? I guess we make the arrangements with the landowner, don't we? Like if we're looking at taking land for road construction, we're making the arrangements with the landowner. So crop damage would probably be negotiated with him as well.
Through the chair, if, if a area has a renter in that area, both parties are consulted in this matter. The land, or the renters also have quite a bit of say on what goes on in that cropland as that is their crop. So we can definitely change those words to be a little more open there for sure. But yeah, both parties are consulted and talked to there and the crop damages would be paid to the owner of the crop.
Counselor Penner?
I guess the number one thing is the landowner and doesn't mit the renter. A good landowner will involve the renters and which happens with oil and everything. You know what, a good landowner naturally does that. So I am happy with the wording here. Were you just having trouble with the mail content or not? Okay.
I also received a phone call from a female farmer who didn't like the wording. So, because she said, I have my name on this title just as he does, so why are we choosing him over me? It's a weird thing, yeah.
And that's why I wanted to ask you if that's all it was.
And that's all it was, yeah.
Deputy Reed McGee?
I like the suggestions that we have on our screen.
All right. So that's the wording changes that are being proposed, that the landowners recourse should they consider themselves the affected party. Any other discussion? Mr. Zier, sure.
Thanks for that. Just to speak back to the, the three-wire versus four-wire. Typically, when we do put in the four-wire, it is because it is a higher strength. We would see a better long-term longevity on that standard of fence and that's why we do go the extra level there. There's no concern with, with administration here. If council wants to put a disclaimer in here, if the landowner signs off on a lower standard fence, we are willing to accept that and it's an option available to council.
Okay, so I, what I'm hearing is there's really not an issue with the fact that it's four-wire, just was looking for clarity on. And I mean, if we got, my assumption is, if we got in a conversation with the landowner and they were insistent that it be a three-wire fence, we probably would consider that, would we not? Mr. Conken?
Through the chair, yeah, under D, under fencing there. I, I'm assuming that's where that would be placed. If the landlord does not wish for the fencing to be replaced, that they wouldn't be compensated, so we would build it to the three-wire standards. They just would not be compensated for that, that difference in cost. Like we wouldn't be doing any payment to them for the difference.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion to the policy on land agreements? Mr. Hogan, please.
Just to, to go back to that, that discussion that council is having, there is the possibility here now if council wants to insert some wording to that effect, that basically if a landowner wants a below standard, a standard that is less than the county's standard, they'd be required to sign off on that. And then that would allow for, if somebody was really adamant, they wanted a three-wire fence, we can send them a form, they can sign off that that's what they want and and then it does put that, that allowance in the policy that.
And then that covers us on the legality side of it too.
Yeah, and, and that's what we'd look for is if, if in time in the future, they came back and said, oh, you should have paid this or paid that or you should have put a four-wire in, we have a form that says, no, you signed off on a three-wire fence. With the understanding too, we can put on that form that we're not going to put a three-wire and then pay you some money for the extra saved from a four-wire or anything like that, right? I don't think we need that in the policy, but we might put that on the form as an example.
So what we're suggesting then is we're adding a item F? Or are we just adding to D?
I think we'd, we'd probably insert a new E and move E down.
Okay, so we're gonna call E now F and we're gonna insert an E in related to the Do we want to word this on the fly or do we want to just table this temporarily to figure that wording out and then come back to it?
I think if council's comfortable with that approach, we can insert the wording, we can table this, we'll insert the wording and we'll bring back the, the cleaned up version.
Before the end of today's meeting?
Yes, it won't, it won't take, it won't take long.
Is that okay with councils? Can we choose to table this for now and we'll bring it back shortly with that wording? I think rather than try to word this on the fly, maybe the best thing is to take a moment However, Mr. Conken, that doesn't necessarily get you off the hook, so can somebody make a motion to table? I need a motion to table. Deputy Reed McGee?
I move to table this till later in the meeting.
Okay, to get the wording. Okay, to get the wording, thank you for that. So we have a motion to table policy 13-3, 13-18 till later in our meeting to get the wording corrected around fencing. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, all right. So what we'll do is we'll move on to 13-38. So, Mr. Conken, welcome back. We never really let you leave. Brush and tree control on road allowances.
Thank you very much. Through the chair, this policy 13-18 was also presented at the committee a whole meeting on April 15th. Once again, just going over some of the proposed changes, updated the policy to align with the county's strategic initiatives and maintaining high-quality infrastructure. We added in attempting to contact the landowners affected by brushing activities prior to the work commencing in their area. Revisions were added for when we, on the projects that we burn brush, that we make sure we get the ash removed in a timely manner. Revisions added for private property brushing, or land brushing. And then requests, just making sure that we have the priority list in there for, when requests come in from the public will be received, and if approved, they'll be scheduled on a, on a priority basis there, so.
Okay, thank you for that. So, just, can you help me clarify the process? So if we get a call in from a rate payer who's requesting some brushing, somebody goes out to look at that? It's assessed as to the need, and then it would be sent into our system? And then as we, we'd set a priority on it, and then as we got to it, it would get done? Is that kind of how it works?
Through the chair, that is correct.
All right, so are there any conversation, questions, discussion with regard to road allowance brush control? Counselor Christie?
I realize, watching some of the brushing that's been done by the river and some by our house, where we have big trees that you've taken the top off because they're bent over to the right-of-way, they need to be taken off at the base, even if it's on the landowners. I've got several trees that are, they're dead now, but there's a stump sticking up 10, 10 feet. It just doesn't look finished at the end of the day. If that tree's already damaged, we may as well take it out, even if it's on the landowner's land. It just, the appearance would be better, and it just cleaned it up better. But I've got two or three areas where it's really good, the brushing and set it back. But those big trees that were knocked the top off, they're dead anyway, we may as well take them out and make it look better than it is now. That's my only comment there.
So do we usually go inside fence lines? We normally are just from the fence line to the road allowance, aren't we? Or to the road shoulder?
Through the chair, that is correct. We stay within county road allowance, unless they're deemed to be a safety hazard where it benefits us to be in private laneway, or private land. So example, intersections, or if we need to make clearance, we can go into that corner and cut back 20 meters to get some clearance for that intersection to improve safety. That being said, if the tree is posing a risk to the road, we can definitely work with that landowner. At the end of the day, if the tree is on their land, it is up to them whether they allow us to remove it or not. So we can always request that absolutely from that landowner and say, hey, we're doing this, we think it's worth taking out, and, and see where that conversation goes from there.
Okay, so Counselor Christie, you're suggesting that if we do get an agreement to remove a tree, that we remove it, bring to the ground?
Well, and that's the thing that, I mean, we're staying on the right-of-way right now with, with the mulcher on the hole, but it damages a tree so bad that it hits it at 30-degree angle, you've got a stump sticking out there that it's no good to anybody. Cut it off with a chainsaw and get rid of it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments with regard to the changes in policy 13-38, which is brush and tree control road allowance, and it's now going to be called road allowance brush control? Counselor Forbes, please.
Could you just give me a verbal update on what the process is when you contact a landowner? How many attempts do you make before you don't make them anymore? I just was asked this question. I'm sorry.
Through the chair, I don't have for sure a number. I know myself personally, I've attempted numerous times, and eventually do get ahold of someone or someone that is related, and you can kind of play the telephone game if, if you're not getting answers from someone. Most people are pretty okay with us doing brush removal. The biggest thing would be when it's in front of a residence, and that can come right down to going in and knocking on the door, leaving a letter, that sort of, trying to get that communication, and that might be all they end up getting, is a notice on their door saying, hey, we're going to be taking this brush out, if you've got any concerns, please call the office, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Hogan?
Through you, Mr. Chair, if, with council's indulgence, I'd like to go back to a question that was asked at the last item, and it's around that procedure versus guidelines. And so I'll use this as an example to demonstrate what I was talking about, because we're, we're here now. If, so under this one, under, under the policy procedure, when I talked in my previous answer about there's a prescriptive governance component to that procedure, that's what you're seeing under this policy, particularly under number two. And so you're saying administration, when you prioritize these, here's how you do that. And so you're saying that as an example, traffic safety is going to be prioritized above dirt trail road allowances, which we would argue is the way it should be. But you're telling us that specifically as part of the policy, that when you go to prioritize these, this is how you do that. And that's how, you know, in, on our end, we'll take that priority list when we put stuff in there, and then build the work plan from there. But that's, that's similar to whether it's snow clearing or anything like that, you're saying, do this first before this other thing. Or this is of more value to us than this other thing. And so that, that's, when I was answering the previous question, now that it's in front of us, that's that demonstration of, say, a governance priority setting, or that ties into why that would be a procedure.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions? Comments, discussion? Are we prepared to move this policy as it's been adapted, road allowance brush control? If so, I would accept a motion from someone saying that we would go forward. Deputy Reeve McGee?
I'd like to move that we recommend, that we, excuse me. I'll start over.
Sure.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the recommended changes to policy 13-38, brush and tree control road allowances.
Okay, so I just have a question, and I guess, Mr. Hogan, this would be for you. Because we're re-titling the policy to, say, road allowance brush control, should we have that in the motion rather than brush and tree control on road allowances?
Through the chair, we should.
Okay, so the motion would be that council approved the recommended changes to policy 13-8, now titled road allowance brush control. And I assume it's got the same policy number, 13-38? So it's called road allowance brush control, Ms. Vanderkuul? I know you told me it was a new screen there. Okay, thank you for that. So now the motion reads that council approved the recommended changes to policy 13-38, road allowance brush control, formerly known as brush and tree control road allowances. Deputy McGee, that's acceptable to you?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we're all aware of what we're voting on? Okay, any further discussion? If not, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Question, Mr. Hogan, are we ready to lift that other policy from the table?
Through the chair, I believe we are.
Okay, so could I have a motion to lift policy 13-18 from the table? Counselor Christie?
Still moved.
Okay, all in favor? And that's carried unanimously as well, okay. So we're back to discussing land agreements. And, Mr. Conken, the change that we've made is we've added an E under fencing and fence compensation. And E now reads, if a landowner requests a fence below county standard, the landowner will be required to sign off an approval for the below-standard fence prior to the construction of the fence. And then F would read what E used to say, which is the county will only construct a fencing berm through Cooley Swampy area, and so on. Okay, any further discussion to this policy? We've changed the language to be "their," "they," and "themselves," so we've made it gender neutral. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So would someone care to move policy 13-18, which is land agreements, for approval? Counselor Forbes?
Still moved.
Okay, so we have a motion now to approve the changes, recommended changes to policy 13-18, land agreements as amended. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, you're not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that looks like it's carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Conken, appreciate your time and your bringing these to us today. Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to 7.1, excuse me, which is the Drumheller Lions' request. And Ms. Vanderkuul, I see you are presenting this one.
Good morning, counsel. Today I bring you a request from the Drumheller Lions. They are seeking sponsorship for the upcoming Dino Days rodeo. This event hasn't been held for over 17 years, and this busy group of individuals are trying to re-establish this as an annual event. There are five tiers of sponsorship ranging from $500 to $2,000. Attached to this RFD is the Lions' list of sponsorship opportunities and their amounts. Administration recommends sponsoring this event through Neheal County's Community Enrichment Support Program, as this is the only option available to this group as their event is held outside of Neheal County. Council has budgeted $6,000 to this program in 2025, and we have spent $1,150 so far this year, with a remaining balance of $4,850. Council has the option today to support the recommended motion of sponsoring $500 to the Drumheller Lions, or you can sponsor a different amount, or you can receive this request for information. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you for that. So are there any discussion or question or comment? Counselor Forbes, please.
Just curious, before they dissolved this and now they're restarting it, did we sponsor them in the past when they held this? I know you weren't sitting here, Carolyn, but you don't, ask Jerry.
Okay, any other question or comment? Counselor Penner?
Just a comment more than anything. Insurance killed a lot of these events years ago, including carbons. Great to see it coming back. We actually have some local or ratepayer rodeo participants, and it is nice that they can attend more closer to home. We've actually sponsored some of these younger kids when they're going off to school rodeos and things like that, so just putting it out there. I know it's just outside the county, just, the Stampede grounds, but.
Deputy Reeve McGee?
I really appreciate that, Counsel Penner. And I also wanted to add that I, I do think it's appropriate in that a large portion of our residents that live in that area do participate in this quite regularly. They are part of the egg society that would like to run this as well, some of them. But to me, I, I see this as very similar as to supporting a Three Hills event or a Trosu event, because again, it's the place of business area that, that our residents are utilizing. So I would be in favor of approving this.
It's interesting that you would say that. Excuse me, I was just going to make the comment that an event that's held by the Trosu Egg Society is technically outside the boundary of Neheal County as well. And so my comment was going to be that I feel that there are a fair number of our residents within that area of the county who see Drumheller as their place of business and/or recreation, and so it's I don't think it's inappropriate for us to sponsor this, I guess. So I would support it, yes. Counselor Penner?
I say kudos to this committee, and I'm sure that there'll be multiple committees involved in trying to run this again. It's a big, big event to put forward. We can have more discussion after I throw it out there. For this first year, I would make the motion that we sponsor an amount of $500.
Any further discussion? So we have a motion that council provide the Drumheller Lions' sponsorship in the amount of $500 to assist in the costs of hosting the 2025 Dino Days rodeo, with funds to come from the Community Enrichment Support Program. Counselor Forbes, please.
I can do it. Now, it's just because I've had conversations with the public about this and supporting, I would have been a no on this. But because you have assured me that our residents are going down the hill to participate in this, I would be a yes then. But there is always that reservation from our people to support something outside of Neheal County, just because, and I did make some phone calls on the weekend to ask a few councilors that I know in their divisions, do they do this? I've had a wide variety of answers. One, no, they do not, and another I got, yes, they do if everything, if it's the last of the funding that's left in that grant. So I did get it on both sides, so I, just because for my own safe, my own well-knowing, is this just to make sure that I understand that what we're doing benefits not just Drumheller, but benefits the residents going down the hill.
Thank you for that. Deputy Reeve McGee?
I just wanted to caution you that I don't want to misinterpret the "down the hill." The rodeo events is up beside the, up on top of the hill, in the Stampede grounds, and it does border the county border. It's like, one, the road divides the two, so.
It's like the Trosu Egg Society grounds, it's right across the road.
Just to, to help with people who aren't familiar with the area, it is no different than us helping the Trosu rodeo at all.
Counselor Cunningham, please.
No, actually, this is a really good reminder, because I kind of sometimes forget about this grant, so I'm glad that it's brought forward. And I guess, you know, when we're talking about Drumheller, I guess I would also encourage communities such as El Nora. I mean, they're very close to our border on the north side of our county, so if they're hosting some kind of an event such as this, So if they're hosting some kind of an event such as this, which I know they do, I mean, I guess I would encourage them to apply for it as well. So, because a lot of our residents in that end tend to go that direction as well. So we have no, it doesn't say in the policy where it has to be. So yeah, I'm just encourage everybody to apply. All we can say is no.
Yeah, clarification. We could say yes or no, yes. Okay, we do have a motion. Is there any further discussion to the motion that we provide the five hundred dollars sponsorship? Any further discussion to that motion? If not, I'll read the motion that counsel provide the Drumheller Lions' sponsorship in the amount of five hundred dollars to assist in the costs associating, associated, sorry, with hosting the 2025 Dino Days rodeo with funds to come from the Community Enrichment Support Program. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Vander Cool. All right, the next item on our agenda would be seven point two. Seven point two is the 2025 Parade Season. And again, Ms. Vander Cool, you are presenting.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I bring you today Agenda's item seven point two, Parade Season. This is an item we review annually. It includes the parade schedule, which the counsel typically attends. The recommended motion is to receive this for information. But furthermore, it's for counsel to be aware of the dates and for counsel to determine which events they would like to attend. Administration will make sure a clean vehicle and candy will be provided. And if you, if you are available and want to attend, please let me know. So first off, in the Parade Season is Linden. Their parade is on June seventh. Carbon is next, on June fourteenth, then Acme on June twenty-first. And Troschu and Drumheller, they're always on the same day, on July first. And Three Hills is July twelfth. And new, starting last year, was the Swallow Parade, which is scheduled for July twenty-sixth. And that concludes my report, and I look forward to receiving feedback from counsel.
Okay. So thank you for that, Ms. Vander Cool. So basically, what we're doing here is we're being informed. We'll receive this for information. And the assumption is somebody from counsel will be attending these parades. And if you are, Ms. Vander Cool would like to know that, so she can arrange vehicle and candy. And I think our usual tradition is to ante up. So I'm going to ante up and say I'll be in Troschu, July first. Counsel Phobes?
I will do Troschu and Three Hills.
Counsel Whitstock?
And I will do Linden and Acme.
Carolyn? Okay. Counselor, Deputy Reeve McGee?
I will do Drumheller, and I have a bit of a conflict for time for Carbon. So if I can make both work, I would like to do Carbon, but I can't guarantee it yet till I get some more significant things from another event.
Okay. Sure, Counsel Penner?
I will do Carbon and Swallow. And I will try to make some of the other ones, but I mean, we've got representation. So I think, feel free, if you want to come to Carbon and Swallow with us, with me, bring your scooter to Swallow. That's the only requirement.
Bring a scooter.
Bring a scooter.
Can I bring my walker? Okay. All right. Sorry, Counsel Whitstock?
I guess just a heads up, Ms. Vander Cool, do we have a county flag that can be supplied for the Acme Parade? Because they've asked. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Cunningham?
So I will plan on doing the Three Hills one. I will let you know about a vehicle. I just want to confirm, this may sound like an odd question, but I know Mr. Hogan and I were discussing rape pair meetings during an election year. And there's a little bit of a gray area about whether that's perceived as campaigning. So I just want to confirm that there's definitely no conflict that we participate in parades during the election year.
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, what I can suggest to that is each year in the election year, councils participated in these. So it is, it is a normal course of duty for, for members of council to participate in these. So I wouldn't perceive any, any of that. We do supply the magnets with your name. None of the magnets say elect. So we're, so I think we'll be, we'll be okay there.
So because it's a normal, regular course of business for a counselor, these are not considered campaigning? That's my understanding?
I would, through the chair, I would say that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Cunningham?
Yeah, and just to clarify, Mr. Hogan and I had that conversation because a rape pair meeting is a normal course of business as well. But we just discussed that we have to be very careful that it's not perceived as campaigning in any way. So even though, yeah. So I'm going to do my unfavorable thing that I'm sure I'll get not very positive feedback from the staff. I brought this up before, and this is certainly not anything that would happen this year. I would still really like to see us do something a little more fulsome with the parade. I know last year, I believe, at the Three Hills Parade, I can't remember if it was the County of Stettler or the Town of Stettler, brought a float, not just a vehicle, which could be perceived as a promotion of their community and also a little bit on the economic development side. So I would really like to see us, and I'm not saying that it would have to be all staff. Counsel could be involved too. But I think it could be a team building, whether it's council building, staff building, whatever. But like I said, I know that's not going to happen this year, but I just, would be really something I'd like to see, see explored going forward.
Counsel Penner?
I've taken it upon myself in the past to do my own little float, my own sign, you know what I mean, on my vehicle. And I hope that nobody's been offended by that. You know, the one year, I think Counsel McGee was with me, and it was about buy local, keep local, or keep, I forget the exact wording it was or whatever. I put it on the county vehicle, you know what I mean, just to promote some things. So I will still be doing some of that this year, but I do see what you're saying. You'd like a big float to go around, but yeah, that's what I've done in the past, sorry.
No problem. So basically, we, is, if there's not any, is there more discussion? I guess I'd be... Counselor Christie?
Just a comment, I'd support the Troschu Parade, but I'll be pushing seniors from the lodge down to see the parade, so I'll be. I'll decide whether my mother pushes me or I push her.
It's always nice to see that group of seniors from St. Mary's and to see you alongside with your smiling face.
It takes quite a crew of volunteers to get them all down that block.
Yeah, it sure does. So thank you. Any other? If not, I would be looking for a motion to accept for information the 2025 Parade Season report. Counselor Christie?
I'm so moved.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Vander Cool, I think we've provided you with the information you've requested. And the motion is counsel received for information, the 2025 Parade Season report. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. I think we'll do the next two items, and then we'll take a break. So let's do seven point three, Troschu Housing Corporation Agreement, May 2025. And, Mr. Hogan, this one is yours.
Through the chair, counsel is familiar with the county's involvement in the Troschu Housing project. And this agreement is just the housekeeping or the formalization of the updated bylaw that you passed just a short time ago, reflecting the different interest rate and that sort of thing. So really, it's just the authorization for the Reeve and myself to, to sign into that, to reflect the changes that counsel has already made through approval of a new bylaw. So this is just putting that, that little bit of housekeeping touch on that to allow the Reeve and myself to sign.
So, and just as a point of clarification, it's all been vetted and everything by our legal, and so.
Through the chair, just as a short bit of clarification, the original agreement has been vetted. This specific one is not, but the only change is the interest rate, and the core agreement is still the same.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, is there any discussion, question, or comment related to this? It's just basically authorizing Mr. Hogan and myself to sign something that we already agreed to. First, Counsel Phobes, go ahead.
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Okay. Counsel Phobes, please.
I'd make the motion that counsel authorize the Reeve and CAO to sign the Troschu agreement.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion that counsel authorize the Reeve and the CAO to sign the Troschu Housing Corporation Agreement as presented. Thank you, Counsel Phobes. Any discussion to the motion? If not, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried unanimously. The next item then on our agenda would be seven point four, which is the Troschu Housing Corporation Annual Golf Classic Request. And Ms. Vander Cool, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this request is similar to the Drumheller request. It's from the Troschu Housing Corporation, requesting sponsorship for their first annual golf classic being held at the Troschu Golf Course on Thursday, June twelfth. There are five tiers of sponsorship with contributions ranging from five hundred dollars to five thousand dollars for a comprehensive breakdown of the sponsorship levels. Please see the attached sponsorship letter, but you probably don't have that on the screen. So I'll just open that up. There's the sponsorship levels. So Neheil County has allocated six thousand dollars for this community enrichment program. We just spent five hundred dollars, so we now have earlier on in this meeting. So we have four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars remaining for further contributions. And additionally, counsel does have access to twenty-five thousand dollar contingency fund within the budget, which can also be utilized if needed. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So just a little bit of clarification, I guess. The funds that are being raised through this particular event and through other events are to provide furnishings and equipment within the facility once it's completed. And I think the original letter I got from the Troschu Housing Corporation and forwarded to Mike, they were looking for us to sponsor at their platinum level. But it's up to us to determine which level we want to sponsor at. That's the only comments I'm making. So discussion, questions? Counsel Cunningham?
Sorry, can you just confirm? Okay, sorry, platinum, I just said, no, yeah. So platinum, they requested is five thousand dollars.
That was the request that came in the email, yes.
Okay, thank you. And my understanding, and Reeve would be able to correct me if I'm wrong, I think I've heard that their goal is to raise two million dollars towards furniture and equipment for the facility?
There is a goal of two million, yes.
Thank you.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they're just really getting rolling on the fundraising campaign, and so. Any other discussion, comment, or questions? Sorry, Counsel Cunningham?
No, that's okay. So when we're saying that they're, they were hopeful that we would do the platinum, and then the recommended motion from administration is five hundred, so I guess my question to administration would be, how do you come up with the recommendation to do the five hundred dollars?
Thank you, Counsel Cunningham. Through the chair, I just copied and pasted from the previous Drumheller one, and I didn't change it to the five thousand. That is my fault. I didn't, I didn't realize that they were asking for the platinum when I received this yesterday.
Counsel Penner?
Just throwing it out there, I know we'll hear from some rape pairs when it comes to the five thousand dollars. Yes, this is something we support, the Troschu Housing, big time. I could stand behind a lower amount, not the platinum. What is that amount? And I'm throwing it out there, I'd like to hear discussion on this. You know, but the whole in one to the silver, I could live with. But just throwing it out there, I'd like to hear your comments, please.
Deputy Reeve McGee?
I agree. I was thinking of the same, the silver was where I was kind of adding to. I, I think a little bit more than the five hundred, because it was so prominently part of this project. I think it is suitable to be a little bit more than the five hundred. But I, five thousand is beyond my reach, I think.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? Counselor Christie?
I guess I view it similar to the Acme School at some point in time as counsel. We need to put a substantial amount of money into supporting something in that facility, not necessarily a room or something like that, not necessarily equipment, but something that has Neheil County on it. At this point, I'd be very comfortable with the gold sponsorship at two thousand dollars for this item. But at some point in time, we need to make a decision on a substantial donation because of the facility and our community.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion or question? This, maybe one other comment I'll make is this particular tournament is targeted not in, to the general public. The people they're chasing for the sponsorships and the donations in this particular event are the people like Shunda and the subcontractors and the people who are benefiting from the project. And so they're basically asking them for a little bit back. I think there will be a number of available spots for just regular, everyday people in the community. But it is a more focused on that type of. And so as a result, because we've had involvement from the very beginning, they have requested our support as well. So I don't know if that helps or clarifies or does anything except for confuse the issue. Go ahead, Counsel Penner.
No, I hear what you're saying, and I think going forward here, there's going to be many a fundraiser, and we'll be supporting them for sure. And when the facility's up and running, there might be a bigger opportunity to, for a much larger, for a room or some stuff like that. But I think for this, this event here, you know, I think I've voiced my opinion.
I appreciate that, thank you. All right. Any further discussion or comment? If not, I would be looking for direction from counsel. And so as to what it is that we would like to do in terms of a response to the request. Counsel Phobes?
I would make the motion to become a gold sponsor for the tournament. At least it's on the table.
Okay. All right. So we do have a motion from Counsel Phobes that we provide a gold sponsorship to the Troschu Housing Corporation's First Annual Golf Classic. So any, any discussion to the motion? Sorry, Counsel Cunningham?
That's okay. And Reeve, just tell me if this is a question for another time, but just curiosity on my part, does the province provide any funding for equipment or furniture for the facility? Nothing at all? Nothing, curious? Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
No. It's very unfortunate, and so. No, it's very unfortunate and so that's why they're working with. Boy, help me out, Counsel Christie, what are the two groups in Troschu?
So, the Catholic, Catholic part of the St. Mary's Now, St. Mary's Foundation, and then the Troschu Housing Foundation that's beside the board behind us, so the seniors that are supporting and fundraising. One of the things with their fundraising program to get their society status, a lot of the first money that they've generated had to be redonated to other societies, which boggles my mind, to get their society part. So, they've given away about $35,000, I think. So, at the end of the day, they now have their society stuff and they're able to start to put money into that fund. The Catholic Social Services part of it and that the St. Mary's Foundation has a substantial amount of money that we really don't know what that number is, that will come back into that equipment stuff. A lot of the equipment they've bought the last four or five years will be transferred because it's still usable. There really hasn't been an inventory now of the inventory that can be used, inventory that's, that's old and isn't gonna be moved across. So, I mean, it's just on the verge of getting started on the major fundraising parts.
That whole fundraising thing is so convoluted, it's, it's a crazy, crazy world. And just all the receding and it's just absolutely nuts. But anyway, thank you for that assistance. The names wouldn't come to me no matter what I was doing here. So, we currently have a motion that we provide gold sponsorship, which is $2,000 to assist. Is there any further discussion to the motion made by Counsel Phobes? Counsel Christie?
Just a comment that we all feel that 500 is not enough and 5,000 is too much, so this is kind of in the middle of the road for me.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, I'm gonna read the motion. The council provide the Troschu Housing Corporation gold sponsorship in the amount of 2,000 to assist in the costs associated with hosting the 2025 Troschu Housing Corporation First Annual Golf Classic with funds to come from the Community Enrichment Support Program. Any further discussion? If not, I'm gonna ask the question, all those in favor? Opposed, the motion is carried. Thank you. At this point, I am going to recess our meeting. We have a delegation at 10:00, so I'm gonna say we're in recess till 10:00 a.m. And I have a reason for that, so.
So it is 10:00 AM and I'm going to call our meeting back to order. The item on our agenda at this point is a public hearing for bylaw 1916 road closure on undeveloped road allowance adjacent to Plan 4910S Block W. I shall call for a motion that the public hearing for bylaw 1916 be opened at 10:01. Councilor Christie.
So moved.
Thank you for that, all those in favor. And that is carried unanimously. All right. So we have a process here. We don't have any public, so I'm not going to refer to the speaker's list. And I'm not going to have council introduce themselves because I don't believe that's necessary. Today's public hearing procedures will be followed according to procedural bylaw 1919. A copy of that is attached to the package and additional copies at the recording secretary's desk. I will now ask our planning and development department to come forward to make their presentation. And welcome, Ms. Keever.
Good morning.
Good morning. And anytime you are ready. We have some new equipment.
It's okay, I'm patient.
We're operating around.
I'm not going anywhere.
Well, you might like to go to a warmer spot. We're just having some technical difficulties, so. We're all listening for the sound of. Here it comes. Good morning, Will. Thank you, Mr. Nyman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, as Reeve Ken introduced, this is for road closure bylaw 1916. This picture is actually, shows one photo of the road closure area. As far MGA Section 606, we advertised in the Three Hills Capital on April 16th, April 23rd, April 30th, May 7th. It was also on the county website and notices were sent to adjacent landowners and referral agencies. Some of those adjacent landowners also were within the town of Troschu. Road closures are governed by the municipal government act. So Section 16-1, the title to all roads in a municipality other than a city is vested in the crown and the right of Alberta. Section 18, subject to this or any other act, a municipality has the direction, control, and management of all roads within the municipality. And Section 22, no road in a municipality that is subject to the direction, control, and management of the municipality may be closed except by bylaw. And this is the, looking down the forest road, which is adjacent to our property. So the applicant is requesting the closure of the undeveloped road allowance adjacent to his property, Plan 4910S Block W, within the northeast of 83323 west of the fourth, which is approximately 5.4 acres. The town of Troschu's urban boundary is within the same quarter and it is within Troschu and Neheal County's intermunicipal development plan. The applicant currently has a bare lot and would like to develop in the future. Should the road closure be approved, it would reduce the rear setback to 25 feet rather than 100-foot setback from the undeveloped road allowance. And due to the shape of the lot being triangular, it is difficult to meet required setbacks as per our land use bylaw. So here is our subject property. And here is our undeveloped road allowance. And this is his lot. Town of Troschu's. Sorry, I don't have a mouse, but this is their boundary. The rest of this quarter is within Neheal County. And here it is closer up. And so yeah, the undeveloped road allowance, which would be consolidated into our parcel, would be approximately 1.33 acres. That amount would be finalized on a survey. So the picture on the right is our environmentally significant area, the Troschu Meadow, Ghost Pine Creek, and it is a level three. As with the majority of that quarter. And the same with the significant historical site. It is considered an historic period. I think a lot of it has to do with the old hospital, Laxey Dan Ranch. And it is a provincial designation. And again, it is that whole quarter. Here is our zoning. The green is agriculture land, orange is our country residential, and brown is a small local rural commercial. As far as the timing of it being zoned country residential. As far as the timing of it being zoned country residential, I do believe it was when the rest of the parcels were zoned. And then our Troschu intermunicipal development area is on the right. So Troschu has, they did outline certain areas within there where they would like to see future residential, which is definitely fits within this, and then they did have a small area commercial, but this is adjacent, due to its location being adjacent Highway five eighty-five going east of Troschu. So here are some photos of the property. The arrow is kind of, to give you an idea, that is where our undeveloped road allowance is. I believe that one stake maybe even could be, this is an older photo, but I believe this is kind of the edge of our, this is probably the east boundary of his property as it lies today. Here's another photo. That big tree is within the undeveloped road allowance, not on his property, but just to give you an idea. This fence line, give or take, is his north boundary line. Here's another photo.
If you look up the hill, you can tell exactly how wide the road allowance is.
Yes, it does give you a good idea. He has constructed an approach, so this is his approved approach. And this is his area, his parcel of land. This is the hill, goes down into a flatter area. He would like to build more at the point of his triangle, rather down in this low-lying area, which could be wet at times. And interestingly enough, this, the north boundary, thousand years ago, they surveyed it as Dominion Avenue. I don't think it was ever developed as an avenue for the town of Troschu, but that is what they called it. And here you can kind of see, like I said, I don't, it was never, like, this was a hundred years ago, but this is what they called Dominion Avenue.
That'll be when the townsite was in the valley.
Yeah, that's right.
Before Troschu moved up there.
And they called it Troschu Valley, yeah.
When the railway came in, they moved the town up on the hill.
And here again, this is looking at his property. Here's the forced road, so another reason we would never need that undeveloped road allowance. Here's another, just an aerial drone that I got from a Troschu site, the triangular parcel is right here. Closure of the undeveloped road allowance will not interfere with legal access to adjacent properties. Consolidation with the adjacent property to the west is required. Closure of the road allowance will add an additional one point three acres to the applicant's land base. Closure would allow the applicant a larger building envelope to develop within. The additional acres would allow construction without requesting variances, and the east property line would essentially move sixty-six feet further east. As per our municipal development plan, core policies, policy nine, core services, policy nine, it is a general policy of the county to retain undeveloped road allowances. However, the sale of old road diversions and/or road allowances that have been replaced by another road developed, another developed road may be considered. We received no letters in favor, we received no letters in opposition, and we received very few agents receive responses. Those we did receive were Alberta Health Services, they had no objections, Talus had no concerns, and our Director of Infrastructure replied that the construction costs required to develop this portion of road would be substantial, and therefore is not included in any of Neheal County's future plans. A package including bylaw nineteen sixteen and any responses will be forwarded to the Minister of Transportation for approval. If approval from the province is granted, second and third reading will be required by council, and council approves the appraisal of land prior to second reading. Payment is received prior to registration, and then the final survey, consolidation, and the transfer of land. My, our last road closure, I believe the public hearing was in September-ish, and I actually received a complete title finished just a few weeks ago. So they are getting quicker.
Okay, that's the end of your presentation?
It is.
So I'll now ask, does council have any questions for the planner? I guess the only comment I would have would be in relation to the comment made by the Director of Infrastructure, I can't understand why constructing that road would be such a problem. Other than it's several, it's a hundred and some feet straight down. Any questions for the planner? All right, I don't see any. I'm going to ask if council is satisfied with the amount of information they have received before we close this public hearing. I'm seeing a lot of nodding, so I am going to remind everyone that once the public hearing is adjourned, no further information on the matter shall be received by council. And I am now going to declare the public hearing closed at ten fifteen AM. Our thanks to you, Ms. Kiefer, for your presence and presentation. And the history lesson, thank you.
Wade helped.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have another public hearing coming at eleven, but we have some other business to attend to prior to that, so I assume we'll see you back again. Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be disposition, oh, we can't do that till we do, I think we'll wait till we do the other public hearing. So we're going to go on to council and committee reports. Thank you for your help this morning. Okay, council and committee reports, we only have one. I was at a Troschu Housing Corporation meeting last night, and I also attended the Troschu Housing Corporation site tour last Wednesday. They are going to do a site tour for the public on June sixteenth in the evening, and if you want to see how big the footprint of that building is going to be, that's an opportunity. It is mind-boggling. When I look at the amount of concrete that's been poured there, and the amount of foundation that's already there, and realize that they're about halfway there, it's incredible. They're working on phase four of six phases for foundation four. Construction framing, they're going to start building walls this week. They're basically framing them inside a structure that they built, and then they're going to stockpile them on-site, and then when they're ready, they'll start standing up walls that have already been pre-framed. What else do I need to tell you? They estimate they might be done, and this is still a guesstimate, they might be done foundation work by the end of July, so they're hoping to have all the foundation footings poured by the end of July. And the other really positive note is that the relationship with Covenant Health has improved dramatically within the last month in terms of the communication going back and forth. So just some of the concerns that were there are disappearing very quickly, so. So yes, community tour, June sixteenth, no, is that right? Yes, it's the Monday, because Wednesday is men's golf night, right? Yes. They figured they would have more people present if they didn't compete with the men's golf evening, yes. And they're also holding a community meeting on the tenth of June, just to bring the community up to speed and to allow them to be knowledgeable about what's happening. And the last thing to tell you is seventeen of eighteen life leases are currently sold, and they're in conversation with somebody about the eighteenth one. Pardon? They went from twenty-four to eighteen. So questions, any questions? If not, that's the end of my report.
The only comment I would make is that the walls won't go up until they start pouring the floor slabs, because that's what the walls will be built on. So the foundations there, the floors have to be poured to get into the door fronts and stuff like that, that will tie everything together. So, and in between that, they got to put all the in-floor technical stuff, electrical and all that stuff that's going in the slab.
So because it's a, because it's a public building, in all of those spaces, they have to have some kind of radon collection? And so underneath that floor is going to be this whole network of gravel and membranes and all sorts of stuff that prevent radon from going into the building. So it's, it's going to be a complex process to get all that done, but. And basically, every wall in the building has footing underneath it, like, there's not areas in the building that aren't supported by footing, because it's more than a single-story structure, so the load has to carry through right down to the footing, so. Anyway, it's, it's a, looks like a beehive, all these little cells and pieces with footing, so, anyway, that's my report. Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to receive council and committee reports for information. Councilor Phobes?
So moved.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to receive for information, council and committee reports as presented. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thank you. The next item on our agenda would be council follow-up action list. Are there any questions related to the council follow-up action list? Councilor Cunningham?
So just for my clarity, the three six eight two four, the governance model creation, I think I was, I didn't understand this completely, but just to clarify, when, I think we had a budget of that, of fifteen thousand dollars, and my understanding, I guess at that time was that Mr. Cuff that we hired would be maybe part of that developing of that draft document, but I think I was wrong about that, because from what I'm seeing here is that administration is developing a draft document. I think that's just something that I maybe misunderstood when we talked about that item at budget.
Through, through the chair, Mr. Cuff put on, was, Mr. Cuff was never engaged to develop the report, or to provide, to develop the model or provide a report. He was engaged to put on the session that council attended.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions related to the council follow-up action list? Councilor Cunningham?
Again, begging for forgiveness, because it's not on the list, but I know there's been some conversation in the community, so just for clarity, that the carbon CEO position now has become an activity of carbon itself, and that Neheal County is not involved in that process anymore, just to clarify that.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Yeah, Councilor Phobes, please.
So then, the budget line item for that position, what happens with it?
Through the chair, so that, that line item remains, and it's part of the overall budget. If it's not expended, it'll form part of what we assume will be a surplus at the end of the year.
Are there any other questions? I guess I would have one, and that relates to, guess where, the most amazing hamlet in Division seven, which is Huxley. Do we have any idea when the wastewater side of things, when the work might commence there, or is that still out for tender, or where are we at with that?
Thank you, through the chair, that is actually still in the design phase right now. Final design of that, and then we will be putting it out for tender fairly soon. Still construction, summer, late, early fall.
So we're anticipating construction this year?
Yes, through the chair, for sure.
Thank you. Councilor Phobes?
The airport, do we know where we're at with that, or have we heard from our partner down the road?
Through the chair, we did, we did, we did meet with Prairie and with the town of Three Hills, which are the two other partners in there. There is nobody really coming forward to, to take that on. So coming out of that meeting, Prairie was going to make a couple follow-up calls, they did that, we didn't get, we didn't get a good bite on that. So my anticipation is, is unless something really changes, you'll see something from us shortly saying that that project is probably dead. Or at least in its current form, yeah.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve McGee.
Just some info that might be helpful to administration, the, one of the speakers that will be at the AGM for Cape on Thursday is the Red Deer Airport, and they have a great presentation on the importance of airports in the community, and maybe that is something we could pass on to the people who are affected by the choices there at the airport. We welcome all visitors to, to the AGM.
So I did have a conversation related to that as well, but I'm not able to share that unless we're in a closed environment, so. It's up to the council, not me.
I move to go into close to further talk about the one item.
Okay. So that would be closed session for Section sixteen, which would be disclosure harmful to the business interests of a third party. So we have a motion to go into closed session under Section sixteen, all those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. And that is carried unanimously.
I thought you were trying to get it into warmer air to warm it up.
I'm actually comfortable today, so I also wore the under your jacket, so that might help. And I don't have sandals on. That really helps.
Okay, we're live? Okay, so we had a motion to return to open session at 10:40. We have recessed to allow the return of the public to our meeting. It's now 10:41. I'll call our meeting back to order. And we are currently still in council follow-up action list. Are there any further discussion questions or comments related to that? If not, I would entertain a motion to receive for information the council follow-up action list as presented. Counselor Whitstock, thank you. So, we have a motion to receive for information the council follow-up action list. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. So, that brings us to the point where we are now anticipating a second public hearing at 11:00. So, I am going to suggest that we be in recess until 11:00. So, we are in recess until 11:00 AM.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion to open the public hearing at 11:02. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And I guess there's just one other little small item of business that I need to take care of, but we will deal with that after this public hearing. So, I'll remind the public, since we do have public here, that if they wish to speak to the bylaw, and I think you've already done this, registered your names on the speakers' list, and there will be opportunity for comment at that time. I'd like to introduce the council members who are present today, and I'll start with you, please, Counselor Cunningham.
Good morning. Laura Lee Michelle Cunningham, Division 5.
Good morning. Jerry Whitstock, Division 3.
Good morning. Debbie Penna, Division 2, down the center to the south.
And good morning. I'm Ken King. I'm the counselor for Division 7, which is north and east portion of Neale County.
Hello. I'm Fay McGee, Division 1.
Carrie Phobes, Division 4.
Wade Christie, Division 6. I'm in the northwest.
Okay, thank you for that. All right. Today's public hearing will be carried out according to procedural bylaw 1919. A copy of the procedures is attached to the package, and if additional copies are needed, they can be found at the recording secretary's desk. At this point, I am going to ask our planning and development department to come forward to make their presentation. And is that you, Ms. Morgan?
It is me.
Okay. Well, anytime you're ready, then, please.
All right. Well, first off, good morning. And as stated, we are here to discuss the redesignation from the agricultural district to the light industrial district. The purpose of this redesignation is for the southeast 303423 west of the fourth, from the ag district to the light industrial district. The additional power from the 9.5 megawatt thermal power plant will be directed to the onsite bitcoin mining data center, which is subject in this application. As per the municipal government act 606, we have to do notifications. So, this ad was posted in the Three Hills Capitol on April 16th, 23rd, 30th, and May 7th of 2025. Notices were also sent to adjacent landowners within one mile and referral agencies. This was also posted on the Neale County website. The summary of the project is that the applicants would like to make use of the existing power from an existing gas power plant to supply power for a bitcoin mining data center operation. So, the photo on the left is the area that is going to be re-designated. When this was referred out, the area was larger. Since then, the applicants have narrowed it down to this. And this is the photo that would be attached to bylaw 1917. Here's a summary of the location. This site is accessed via Highway 21 and Township Road 344, and it is just north of the hamlet of Huxley. The road Township 344, if you were to go east, it would take you directly to the Buffalo Jump, just for another location. This is our municipal development plan, the economic portion. So, this is where it would tie in with the redesignation. So, goals it fits are number one, to consider the necessary infrastructure to retain, expand, and attract business. Number two, to create opportunities that would provide a variety of development options that will diversify and strengthen the county's economy. The objectives of the economic MDP is number three, to balance economic development opportunities that are adjacent and compatible along transportation corridors. And policy number nine of the MDP under the economic section is all commercial and industrial uses will maintain high standards for visual appearance and will provide integration with surrounding land uses. The planning considerations we also consider are the land use bylaw 1808, Section 102, which is the light industrial district. The purpose of the light industrial district is to provide for a wide range of low intensive industrial and commercial land uses in the rural areas which are easily accessible. Section 102.5A, I, and double I, industrial uses shall be located within a reasonable distance of a primary highway or a railway. Section 102.5C, industrial uses shall be located and designed so as to not create conflict with adjacent or surrounding land uses through unsightly appearance, emission, And it's, our letter M is a data center, which is a discretionary use in the Light Industrial District. The redesignation process, the applicant is to, sorry, this application is to re-designate the lands related solely to the land. A data center is a discretionary use in the Light Industrial District. If the applicant is successful with their application to rezone the lands, the development permit will address the specific details of the proposal. This application would be then taken to the Municipal Planning Commission, and administration and the MPC Board would add conditions to the development permit during that process. Other additional processes is that this application was reviewed by Alberta Utility Commission, which is also referred to as the AUC. The AUC does not regulate data centers or Bitcoin. The AUC regulates natural gas generators that generate the power for the associated data center operators. Course Energy received its approval on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The applicant will also need approval under the Alberta Environment and Protected Areas and confirm that the project meets the Alberta air emissions standards and guidelines for electricity generation for emissions. Also, as per section six nineteen and six twenty of the MGA, we cannot address matters decided by the AUC, and any conditions issued by the AUC prevail over conditions issued by the municipality that conflict with them. The AUC process, it should be noted, this, this process is separate from the municipal permitting. As of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, the opportunity to have an exemption from obtaining an AUC approval from an own-use power plants between one megawatt and ten megawatts has been eliminated. Applicants must file a checklist application with the Alberta Utilities Commission. Applicants must comply with Rule twelve, noise control. The applicants must also confirm that the power plant does not directly adversely affect anyone, and applicants must confirm that the power plant has no adverse effect on the environment. And here are some site images. So again, the area outlined in red is the area that we are talking about, the redesignation today. So here is a picture of the area, the whole corridor as it sits on the left, and then just an area of the site, and then their overlay with the diagram. And when we visited the site, so again, this is Township three four four. Highway twenty-one is right there. And then this is the site as it sat last week. And right at the entrance, again, where that gate is, is about where the data mining facility would be. And then the written submissions, there were none received in favor or opposition. And that is it for my presentation.
Okay, thank you for that. Does council have any questions for the planner? Counselor Cunningham.
So, under that additional processes, Paige, I just, it said this project will need approval from the AER. So if, if we approve the redesignation, but they do not get approval from the AER, then where does the land designation sit? Then it's already been changed, correct?
Are you meaning the Alberta Environment and Protected AEP?
Well, where did it say? Didn't it say somewhere that they needed approval from the AER? Or did I?
Alberta Environment and Protected Areas.
Okay, okay. So if they don't, if they, for whatever reason, they didn't get approval for that, but we've re-designated the land, then what? Like, I guess I'm just wondering, like, do they?
Once it's re-designated, it stays. The designation stays whether the actual use takes place.
Right, so would, like, I'm just trying to think the process, like, would, like, I'm surprised actually, because they've got AUC approval, so why wouldn't they have the other approval before coming for the redesignation, I guess, is my question.
We're not, they have to do these kind of hand in hand with the AUC, but they are separate processes. The redesignation would stay with the land. However, it is an existing oil field site. So there is already something with the environment, but it is a good question.
And I will add to that comment. So typically, when they do have to meet these standards and emissions, if they are not meeting them, they have to make changes in order to meet those standards, or the development can't proceed. So there are requirements that they have to do. And again, the redesignation would be done. However, it can always be undone. It is the same process to undo it, but it can be undone by the landowner if the development doesn't proceed.
Okay, so basically, the understanding is, is once we've re-designated, it's re-designated, and the only way it gets reversed is if someone came and applied for it to be actually changed back.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the planners? Counselor Phobes.
Just for clarity for me, the assessment on the property after it's been installed is only on the C cans, it's not on the equipment inside, correct?
Mr. Hogan.
Through the chair, that's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions related to the application for redesignation? So we have in front of us is an application to re-designate from agriculture to light industrial. Are there any questions for the planners related to that redesignation application? Okay, if I don't see any, I know the applicants are here. Is there, you do have an opportunity to make a presentation if you wish, if there's additional information that you'd like to add to what's already in front of us. This would be the opportunity to do that if you so wish. Okay. So, does council have specific questions for the applicant in any way, shape, or form? Counselor Christie.
Just curious, with the generating capacity there, and the shortage of the grid at some points of the year, is there any opportunity to co-generate back into the grid if we need it?
So, if you're going to respond to that question, I'll ask you to come up to the microphone. Just because we are streaming live and recording, appreciate it if you could come to the mic to respond. So if you could just give me your name?
Yeah, my name is Cody Halloran.
Cody, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess just to make sure that I understand the counselor's question. So essentially, if there's a shortage of electricity on the grid, would they be able to use this power generation to go to the grid?
I know that I have a cousin that was the plant manager for the pulp mill in Hinton. When they were short of power up there and they co-generated from their standby plant, they made massive money to support their generation system, where the, the revenue from that shortage time is, is basically free trade rates. But it bridged that area when they needed extra energy. And I know in this area, at times, we get warned that we're getting to the peak where we need supplementary energy. Is this an opportunity for you and for us at that point in time?
To my knowledge, yes. So the, the units need to be approved to be able to export to the grid with Alberta Electric System Operator, and that process is underway as well.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Cody. Appreciate your response. Counselor Cunningham.
Sorry, I might have to chase you back, but just, we received the letter of intent, and I just wanted to ask a question. Both traffic and noise are not anticipated to increase, which respectfully sometimes is a little gray, not anticipated to, so. But just to confirm that the, the noise levels, that is addressed through the Alberta Utilities Commission. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Halloran.
Yes, that is correct. So the, as part of getting the approval with Alberta Utilities Commission, we need to do a noise impact assessment. It has been completed and is deemed to be compliant.
So then they give you the levels that are acceptable, that you have to stay within?
That's right. They, they establish a level themselves, and we do the, the study to ensure that the design of that equipment and cumulative effects of that equipment will be under that limit.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So perhaps you should just, just in case. It's an exercise program. Okay, just, are there any further questions for the applicant from council at this point? Okay, thank you, Mr. Halloran. I think you have answered the questions that we need. Okay, I'll ask one last time, if there's anyone else present who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw, they need to come forward. And I don't see anybody in the room. Does council have any further questions for the applicant or administration? If council is satisfied with the information they have received before closing this public hearing, and I think I'm not seeing any disagreement, and I would remind everyone that once the public hearing closes and is adjourned, if there is no further information will be received by council on this matter. And I think everybody's clear on that. So it is now eleven twenty, and I am going to declare this public hearing closed and ask for a motion to go back to the regular council meeting. Counselor Penner, thank you. So I have a motion to return to the regular council meeting. All those in favor? That's carried unanimously, and I just want to thank you folks for being here today. Very much appreciate that you came and are here, so thank you. And we'll be addressing this, I think, relatively quickly. So that would take us in our agenda to eight, which would be disposition of delegation and public hearing business.
Yeah. There is no report for this public hearing.
That's not on our agenda for today's meeting.
No, it's not.
Great, okay. So there is none of that. So we've taken care of those details. There is no closed session beyond what we've already done. And there were no motions coming from closed sessions, so at eleven twenty-one, I am going to say our meeting is adjourned. We are adjourned. Oh, wait a minute, there's one other little thing we have to do here. It's very important. I understand we need to apologize to Mr. Nyman for making him come in to council this morning to fix a problem, technological problem, on his birthday.
Aww.
So we apologize, Mr. Nyman, for any additional burden we provided you this day, and we wish you a very happy birthday and trust you'll have a great remainder of your day. Thank you.
That was his fortieth birthday too, right?
I didn't say a number, I didn't say a number, just happy birthday, Mr. Nyman. We are adjourned.